Good evening and welcome to this evening's Board of Education meeting. Today is Wednesday, June 21st, and I'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands on the ancient, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. LeVoe, can we please have a roll call?
Yes. Mrs. Costelli?
Here.
Mr. Doring?
Here.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Here.
Mrs. Raciio?
Here.
Dr. Reed?
Ms. Regan?
Here.
And Dr. Roscoe?
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Votto?
Here.
Eight members present and voting.
Excellent, thank you. We do not have student board representatives, and we will not have those until the school year begins again in the fall. Next on our agenda is presentation and awards, and we do not have that this evening either. Is there anybody who wishes to speak for public comment this evening? We do not have that. Moving on to the consent agenda, item number seven. I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items number 7.1 through 7.27.
So moved.
I have a first, second. Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Item number eight on the agenda is items removed from the consent agenda, and we do not have any. Item number nine is correspondence. Do you have it? Okay, Mr. Ross is going to help us, as Dr. Roscoe is not here. Thank you, Mr. Ross.
We have an acknowledgement of a gift, a donation from Mindful Monument Space of $2,000, and this came through from Mary Fritz School. I'd like to thank them very much. We have a gift from the HYS, H-Y-S-P-T-O, for Highland Elementary School with a value of $2,000, a monetary donation for students' needs for the 23-24 school year. We have a monetary donation for flexible seating, sensory, and mindful tools from RYS-PTO for Mary Fritz Elementary School, in addition for an additional $2,000. I thank them very much. And we have a thank you note from Frank and Karen Denning and family, Daniel, and all the members of the Board of Education. Thank you for sending the beautiful arrangement to Rob's funeral. Your kindness and thoughtfulness means so much to us, and I know Rob would have been touched. And that's signed by Karen, Christopher, and Ryan. And Superintendent Bilizi, thank you for all the support, prayers, and generosity during this difficult time of the passing of my mother. The floral arrangement was very gorgeous and warm and warmed our hearts. I appreciate having this time with my family, Amy Host and family. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ross. I appreciate that. Moving on to our committee reports. 10.1 is the ACES Governing Board. Mr. Ross, you're just the spotlight today.
At the last ACES meeting, we received the ACES Design Plan 3.0, the plan of moving ahead in the next two or three years, which I will leave with the central office if anybody wants to go through it. And that's pretty much it. It gives a plan of action of what they want to accomplish in the next two or three years. So I will leave that one, Linda.
Thank you very much. Our system-wide PTAC update. Mrs. Latour.
So there was not a meeting in the month of June, but the Parent Choice Award nomination form has been sent out. It is open until June 30th, so we look forward to seeing those nominations from all of our families. Our next meeting will be in September, once school resumes.
Awesome. And while we're over there, the Special Education PTAC. Mrs. Turner.
We did not have a meeting in June. Our next meeting is scheduled for September. We'll send out a parent survey over the summer to all families to garner information regarding desired topics, as well as meeting times and days.
Wonderful, thank you. Our Food Service Strategic Planning Committee. Go ahead, Mr. Berman.
Sorry, Mr. Bondi couldn't be here tonight. There was no meeting.
There wasn't? Okay. We are already in our summer mode, aren't we? While we're on that side of the auditorium, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, Ms. Raciio. The Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee is very excited to be partnering with the town of Wallingford's racial justice team. So we have begun that conversation, and actually, we have a subcommittee meeting tomorrow over Zoom. So we're going to begin talking about how we can expand our presence in the town with all of the stakeholders, and we look forward to having our students and our schools partner with the rest of the town members in the committee.
Excellent, thank you. 10.6 is our CAVE report. I do expect within the next couple of weeks to be getting the legislative update that is published by CAVE with all of the final bills that were passed and approved, so there'll be more on that next month. Number 11 on our agenda is old business. I do not believe we have any at this time. We will move on to number 12, Executive Session, and I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
First and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we're now in executive session. Thank you very much. Good evening and welcome back to the Board of Education meeting. Our next item on the agenda is item 13, our Instructional Committee. Mrs. Passeretti, Mr. Votto.
Thank you, Mrs. Raciio. The first item, item number 13.1, is the presentation of the 2022-2023 Annual Teacher Evaluation Report. This time, I will turn it over to Ms. Latour to present that.
So Dr. Thompson is going to start, actually. He has the first part, and then I'll jump in at the end.
Thank you, Mrs. Latour. Thank you, Ms. Passeretti. So the 2022-2023 school year teacher evaluation plan adopted the flexibilities as used from the state of Connecticut guidelines for educator evaluations from 2017. These flexibilities included a focus on social-emotional learning and overall well-being of students, staff, and educators, equitable learning opportunities for all students, culturally responsive teaching and learning practices, academic achievement, and family engagement. The Wallingford Public Schools Professional Development and Evaluation Committee, known as PDEC, under the leadership of Principal Christina Kiley, adopted and worked throughout the year to implement these flexibilities. And specifically, the PDEC engaged in some of the following work. We, at the beginning of the school year, of the administrators' school year, we had a slideshow that was updated to reflect the flexibilities and the evaluation plan. We provided training on the flexibilities to administrators during our fall retreat with them. We provided training for teachers, what the principals did as well in their September staff meetings. In December, this past December, we were informed that our evaluation platform, EdReflect, was actually going to be ending its use. It was no longer going to be used. As a company, they were no longer going to provide that platform for us, so we started looking as in a subcommittee to look for an evaluation platform that would work for the district. And ultimately, we selected the Power School Perform Platform after three different presentations from different companies. In May, the PDEC discussed the readoption of flexibilities for the upcoming school year, the 2023-2024 school year, understanding that there will be guidance related to a new teacher administrative model from the Connecticut State Department of Education, which we have, and that'll be coming, starting in the 2024-2025 school year. Our team program, which mentors new teachers, we had 22 mentoring teachers working with beginning teachers, 13 elementary teachers, five middle school teachers, and four high school teachers, all of whom passed their team modules thanks to the good work of the folks there. 479 tenured and 116 non-tenured teachers and certified educational specialists were evaluated through our teacher evaluation process, and 32 administrators were evaluated using the Wallingford Administrator Evaluation Process.
So a big part of the plan, obviously, is the professional development piece, and the structure that we put forward for professional development is that the curriculum coordinators and the special education department will meet with their respective staff to identify areas for growth for the school year. Sometimes, our professional development plan is dictated by district initiatives, and then other opportunities for staff are created through the department based on needs assessment that the administrators do, building administrators, curriculum administrators, and special education. And then we also offer our staff several opportunities a year for self-directed time. This is when our certified staff can identify areas in their own personal and professional goals to use on an early release day to do a tutorial, or investigate a particular teaching method, or review curricular units, et cetera. So in this document you have in front of you is a sampling of the PD that we've put on through the course of the year, and we broke it up into different buckets. There were several opportunities this year for our staff in the area of technology. Our district shifted at the beginning of the year. Our parent communication tool, which was Parent Square, so there was a learning curve there. iReady was our new universal screen software that we used for English Language Arts in grades three through eight, and then for mathematics, K through eight. CTSEDS, under the guidance of Mrs. Turner, was an ongoing professional development opportunity for our staff as they learned the new platform. Under preschool, under the guidance of Liz Gaffney, decided to do some things related to executive functioning and cultural diversity in the early childhood setting, the use of purposeful play, as our youngest learners are experiencing school, for many, for the first time. So learning how to experience language and numeracy in a play-based setting. Under curriculum instruction and assessment, we are proud to have completed Cohort 5 and 6 under structured literacy. This has been an ongoing effort for the district to take part in the five-session, five-part series for structured literacy. In addition to that, we also had our weekly coaching with our Literacy How mentors, and that has enabled us as a district to have all of our K3 teachers, special educators, interventionists, librarians, speech and language, trained in structured literacy practices, in order to integrate as much as we can into instruction in all areas for our students. In the coming fall, we'll embark on Cohort 7, which will hit grade four, and culminate in the spring with grade five. And I have to say, it's been a huge undertaking. It's been a heavy lift in each building as we are learning these new practices and integrating them with our curriculum, and watching it unfold and starting to see the traction that it has created with our students and our scores related to our universal screens. It's a proud moment for all of our schools and our staff in terms of the dedication and implementation of these practices in the area of literacy. Additionally, we've done a lot of work in math with our running records for computational fluency. Our middle school and high school have looked at student engagement and student discourse. Skills-based health was a big focus in our wellness area for PE and health. We looked at small group instruction, scientific vocabulary, looking at ways to assist our students being engaged in the classroom as much as humanly possible. And then, one of the other things I do want to take special note towards is we were able, with some of our grant funding, to have all of our intervention teachers in the K5 schools or in Gillingham trained. Mrs. Turner has been continuing as well to send some of her staff. Or in Gillingham has different levels of training, so our students are able to get research-based instruction in the area of literacy to assist them on the developmental continuum for learning how to read. We are doing a lot of work as well with inquiry, adding writing to the social studies classroom, as well as looking at, in some of our special areas, music composition and artistic strategies and behaviors. Under social-emotional learning, we continue to be blessed with the presence of Frank Picone under Nurtured Heart, looking at the social-emotional development and relationship building in our secondary schools, as well as dealing with a lot of different mental health disorders for our staff to best help our students, school-based substance use interventions, mental health and drug and alcohol addiction support. And then, under, lastly, diversity and equity, looking at culturally and linguistically sensitive SEL practices. The African-American, Black, and Puerto Rican Latino Studies Think Tank was important. That was a new class this year that was mandated by the state. So our teachers were able to participate in a think tank with other teachers of this course to share ideas and strategies, because that curriculum was quite dense coming from the state. There was a lot to cover. As well as looking at different opportunities for our student population and our staff in terms of inclusive environment. So as we continue to plan moving forward into next year, each building and each curriculum coordinator just reevaluates with the staff within those departments to find areas for growth in the coming school year, and that's how our professional development plan starts. It is a fluid document. As we continue to experience different opportunities within the classroom, we try to plan things that will assist our staff in meeting the varied needs within the school.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Latour and Dr. Thompson. Does anyone have any questions?
I have one, just one quick question. And I don't know, it just seems disproportionate, the amount of curriculum and instruction compared to everything else. Like, there's a lot compared. And quite honestly, I'd like to see a little more in the DEI and maybe some more under social and emotional learning. I don't know if that's just because that's what was requested. I just, and I'm sure there's a reason why, it just seems really disproportionate, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Next, item number 13.2, Discussion and Possible Approval of the Proposed Educator Evaluation Plan, Including Teacher/Administrator Evaluation Flexibilities for 2023-2024, CSDE Correspondence. And I believe this is back to...
I'm right over...
Dr. Thompson.
Yes, thank you.
That's what I thought.
Appreciate it. So the Educator Evaluation and Support Council 2022, which is a state council, has been looking at changing the evaluation plans for both teaching and administrative in the state, the guidelines. During this time, they were looking to begin those changes in the 2023-2024 school year. However, on January 18th, the council reached consensus to recommend to the State Board of Education extending the flexibilities one more year for this upcoming year, for It'll allow districts the opportunity to continue implementing the flexibilities while they continue to get input and work to formalize the changes that they were hoping to make with stakeholder input. And on March 1st, the State Board of Education approved that, adopted the continuation of the flexibilities. We went to our PDEC committee, and it was unanimously voted on to recommend to you, the Board of Education, to also continue those flexibilities one more year. Superintendent Bilizi received an incredible amount of information recently about the process for the changes that will be coming up, and so there'll be a lot of work ahead, including working with our PDEC committee, to take a look at the evaluator plans for both teachers and administrators in order to meet the guidelines that the state will be looking to change. So there'll be much more on that in the upcoming year.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Comments? We'll let Superintendent Bilizi a question or a comment, probably more comments right now.
So just to add on to some of what Dr. Thompson shared, so Fran Rubinowitz from CAPS had organized for the superintendents this morning, actually, a call, a virtual meeting to discuss and review a lot of what's kind of encompassing the new plan. So they are suggesting that we start now with looking at our PDEC committee and start mapping out and planning what the new plan is going to look like. This morning, they gave us an overview of what needs to be included in the new teacher and administrator plans. So they called them like the must-haves in the plan. They gave us an overview and outline, but a lot of it is going to come back to the PDEC committee and us working together to create a plan that we would then bring, the PDEC committee would need to agree to, and then it would come to the board for approval for implementation for the fall of 2024. Some of the things that were recommended and suggested, we're doing a tremendous amount of research by the PDEC committee to look at rubrics that we will use. So the Learning Forward Rubric for 2022 is recommended, that we highly look at that, use that as a criteria. In addition, when you look at the teachers, we have classroom teachers, we have support staff. So the current plans that we have out there and the rubrics that we use, it's kind of a one-size-fits-all. So, but we do know that there are standards out there, for example, for our school psychologists, for school counselors, that are different than just classroom teachers. So that gives the PDEC committee an opportunity to research that and come to consensus as to, when you're evaluating a school psychologist, you would use the standards that match what they're doing, which I think, to me personally, I can't speak on behalf of the committee or any, makes a tremendous amount of sense. So it gives us an opportunity to differentiate more based on the roles of our staff, our certified staff. Additionally, it also gives us an opportunity to look at the educational leadership standards for administrators, which, again, even talking with Fran Rubinowitz today on the call, she had commented that, again, it's all lumped together. So there's more opportunity for districts to really take a look at what we're currently doing and make those changes, in addition to looking at the number of observations that a teacher and an administrator gets a year, looking at, you know, what are the support plans for Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3, if someone needs assistance. So there's a lot of work to be done. It's the first big rollout. It was just approved on June 14th, what the guidelines are for both the teachers and for the administrators from the state. So we're going to work this summer to look at our PDEC committee that we currently have, see if there's additional members that want to join. There's a lot of work ahead to do. I think some of the other great things is the RESC are also offering a tremendous amount of professional development. So your facilitators of the PDEC committee can attend a two-day training in August, and that's to help map out the year and the components of what needs to happen, in addition to providing central office administrators additional training on evaluating our administrators. The big focus overall is really going to be feedback and growth. So really, that constructive feedback to all teachers, administrators, what does that look like, based on research and things we know that are best practices, and how do we help all grow? There will also be additional professional development for teachers and administrators as well, that they're going to be providing. So there's going to be a lot to support. It's just, it all rolled out this morning, and so we have a ways to go, but at least to give you a little bit of an idea as to where we're going.
Okay. Yep.
Good question. So what you were saying is, we can tweak our plan, we could tweak the must-have list that you said that the state has, and it'll be our duty to come up with a separate plan, not a separate plan, but certain standards for a school counselor as opposed to a teacher. We do that, or do they give us those guidelines?
No, they give us suggestions and where to look, but we can do that, as long as the PDEC committee agrees to that, absolutely. So we can tailor it so it really meets the needs of individuals that are in the district.
Good. Anyone else? Comments? Do we need to take any action tonight on this, or you're just presenting it?
We have to approve the... You'll have to approve the, adopting the flexibilities, sorry, for one more year for the 23-24 school year.
13.2. So many papers here. Okay. All right, in that case, I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed educator evaluation plan, including teacher/administrator evaluation flexibilities for 2023-2024, the CSDE correspondence. Do I have a second?
Second.
So any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. This has been approved. Next, the Instructional Committee Business Agenda is 13.3. We have the approval of acceptance of resignations. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Anthony Loomis, effective June 30th, 2023. Anthony Loomis has been a Health and Wellness Resource teacher, and then a Wellness Curriculum Coordinator since August of 2016. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Kimberly Moore, effective June 30th, 2023. Kimberly Moore has been a World Language Curriculum Resource teacher, and then a Wellness Resource teacher, and then a Global Awareness Curriculum Coordinator since January of 2023. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry, that's 2013.
I don't have my reading glasses on. I'm so sorry. January 2013. Thank you for that correction.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Make sure I can read this one correctly by holding it out a little bit further. Sorry about that. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Steph... I make a motion that the board of education accept the resignation of Stephanie Foster, effective June 30th, 2023. Stephanie Foster has been a middle school English language arts teacher since August of 2016. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions, motion carries. Lastly, I'd like to make a motion that the board of education accept the resignation of Gillian Dobitz, effective June 30th, 2023. Gillian Dobitz has been a school counselor since January of 2023. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions, motion carries. Items 13.4 through 13.9, we will have no action tonight on those items. Item number 13.10, discussion and possible approval of a technical edit for policy 6146, which is the high school graduation requirements. This time I will turn this over to Ms. Latour.
Thank you. So this is just a technical edit. Um, the board through the budget process reduced the graduation requirement for physical education from two credits to 1.5. So this is just a reflection in board policy of that change. Um, I did want to wait until after our seniors graduated to make the technical edit. And so um, this is really informational just for you. The revised policy will be put on the website so that every graduating class from this point forward has um, the need to just fulfill the 1.5.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Ms. Ratchell.
I just want to um, remind anybody who might be listening that technical edits do not on policies, do not have to go through the regular process of two reviews and then a consent agenda at a regular meeting. So given that this is just a technical edit, similar much like a clerical type of thing, um, it could just appear once and be edited.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments on this? Seeing none at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the technical edit for policy 6146, the high school graduation requirements. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions, motion carries. This time I'll turn it back over to Ms. Ratchell.
Thank you, Mrs. Passeretti, and I'm gonna hand it off to Ms. Regan and Mrs. Castelli. And I'm gonna hand it over to Mrs. Castelli.
Thank you. All right, so at our June 12th, yeah, June 12th, uh, operations committee meeting, uh, Mr. Burrell reported that the projected surplus for the month is 149,000. This is a decrease of 627,000 from the previous month. The main reason for the decrease is some items will be purchased to use the surplus as shown by the department on an uh, an attachment, document A1, if anyone wants to see that. Mr. Burrell also presented the uh, 2023, 2024 budget by object. Ms. Turner spoke about the Apex rental agreement. This was great news for everyone. Uh, Apex is a learning center that is used by the behavioral specialists and B C B As. There is also a space that has been created for the transition academy. The consensus of the operations committee was to send um, the all the financial reports to um, the board for for approval, and they were approved uh, this evening. From the cafeteria, reports, Mr. Bondi reported there was a projected monthly surplus of 102,448 dollars and a year to date surplus of 701,819 dollars. Total breakfast and lunch meal served for May was 110,417. For the month of May, the state will reimburse 222,905 dollars and 31 cents for the smart funds refund. He reported that the lunch participation for May was the highest for the school year, so that's great news. And the consensus of the operations committee was to send that along for approval, and again, was approved tonight. Mr. Deptula reported that this uh, security vestibules and the Sheen track and field projects have projected completion dates. Mr. Deptula verified that the town maintains the elementary school ball, ball field. That was a question that I had asked. Um, and I have to take that up with the town. Um, that's it, and the meeting was adjourned and uh, I'm I'm all set, handing it back over to Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Castelli. The next item on our agenda is item 15, our administrative report, and I'll start with Superintendent Belizzi.
Okay, good evening. Um, before I start with the report, there is just one um, uh, donation we received that I just want to make sure I acknowledge and say thank you for. Um, so this is a total value of 227 dollars and 28 cents. And this is from Bernstein Electric. Um, and it was to all of our Wallingford Public Schools, and they donated 12 POW MIA flags for each of our 12 schools. So we were able to um, get them quickly from them, it was very kind that they did that. And so our schools were able to make sure they had them up and um, displayed for Memorial Day. So we are truly appreciative of that. So just wanted to make sure I acknowledged that before I continued on. Um, just a couple of quick things. So we had graduation on the 15th for both of our high schools, which was beautiful weather, and it was a wonderful celebration and ceremony at both of our schools. Um, we were able to have both of the schools either the day before or two days before, the graduates were able to walk through their elementary buildings. And so we have lots of great pictures and videos um, that Mrs. Lovell and I are working on putting all together so we can share with um, Mr. Brian Orvard for Systemwide PTAC, I know that was something he wanted to see as well, and put up on our website after we get that all organized together. So that was a great success, it was a lot of fun, and I know the students really enjoyed it. So I'm glad we had an opportunity to do that. Um, so now that school is out, we've already begun doing a lot of our summer planning for the start of the next school year. Uh, we did have a full day of professional development with our administrators yesterday. Uh, we had a consultant from our um, department who does our um, works with our administrators. So they're from the International Center for Leadership and Education, and so they spoke to our administrators about data teams as the focus. And so talking about the components of it, the process of it, and looking at how we can implement them with a little more consistency and fidelity starting the school year. Uh, we are all working hard at central office to look at all of the different components of what we're looking for the start of the school year. One big piece of that under Dr. Thompson is the hiring of staff, and so we'll continue as we move through um, to look at our resignations and open positions and continue to fill them as we go through. Uh, one of the last things I just wanted to mention is we did have our first meeting with Jonathan Costa this month. Um, we did start uh, to take a look at our portrait of a graduate. It was our first meeting. Uh, he gave us a lot of information, it was a great turnout with our different committee members. Um, he gave us homework to start to work, start looking at. Um, and so we're working on that as well, and our next meeting will be uh, I believe it's August 14th, that we'll regroup again and move forward. Um, so I believe that is all we have. The one last piece I just, before I turn it over to Mrs. Latour, um, I did receive the town council agenda. I know a few have asked about our four new positions, one for each middle school and one for each high school, our armed uh, school re- security officers. That um, will be up on the town council agenda for Tuesday evening, the 27th, for them to review and hopefully approve the job description. So I know the police chief will be there, um, and him and I are in discussion if he needs me to attend as well, but I'm available to go. So hopefully that will get approved and we'll move forward that way. So I'll pass it off to Mrs. Latour.
Thank you. Um, I just have a quick report. Uh, the curriculum office uh, has a few days left remaining in the office before they take their summer break. And they have already turned their eyes towards the coming school year. We have been so fortunate to have many teachers volunteer to come in and uh, work a few days past the school year to begin writing curriculum for the next round of provisions. So we are currently writing um, several courses in mathematics, science, C T E, um, English Language Arts and Social Studies. So I just want to thank our staff for um, pressing pause on their summer break and coming in to do some curriculum writing. Um, and we had 30 teachers come in today to do alongside our administrators, a train the trainer model for the dibbles, which is our new universal screen. The state changed their list of approved universal screeners for K3. Um, so we spent um, six hours today learning how to dibble. And uh, we will be dibbling away in the fall. Um, but it was a, it was a great training. It was a wonderful practice, um, and it was a very large group. So a huge shout out to Mrs. Bukary, um, our building principals and our teachers for um, sustaining six hours of of the dibbles training. I do appreciate the efforts there. Summer programming is um, finalizing as I speak. And um, we are fortunate again to have um, eight summer Sizzler courses. These are courses that are developed by our teachers and proposed to our families. They range in um, activities such as um, there's a workout camp, so a physical activity outside, running and yoga and things like that. Reader's Theater, digital photography, Maker Fun, Bringing Literacy to Life in a Sign Language Class. So these are opportunities for our students in various grades between kindergarten through eighth grade. It's just a nice opportunity for kids to continue to socialize during the summer um, in an enrichment based course. We are running elementary reading and math courses, uh, one at each grade level, as well as 11 courses for credit recovery for our sixth through 12th graders. And then finally, it's it's really exciting. Um, our our Center for Innovation and Design had students in there all week this week. Um, we are running uh, a total of six summer camps at the Center for Innovation and Design. A huge shout out to Chris Stone for the work that he's done, um, getting the center up and running to have our students uh, be able to explore STEM based opportunities in the center. It's great to see kids um, in in there because it has been closed for a while. So this week was invention camp. We're running um, NASA Astro Camp in two weeks, Stories in STEM and Robotics and Coding through the month of July. And then we'll run two August camps, Lego Robotics and STEM Exploration with Little Bits and Sphero Robotics. So we have working alongside Mr. Stone, um, staff members, as well as uh, different opportunities for our students again in various grade levels. And this is kind of our ease into having students into the Center for Innovation and Design on a regular basis. And so um, I will share the schedule with the board. And if you would like to come visit some of the summer programming to see what it looks like and to see what our students are engaged in, I would just ask that you give me an email and I'll meet you there and kind of walk you through. So um, we have a lot of exciting things happening there this summer. That's been a long time coming for us, so um, I look forward to showing you guys around. Hey, Mrs. Turner.
We're almost done. Um, so just in terms of the special education department, we are in the process of planning our extended school year. Our extended school year will run July 3rd to August 4th. We have um, several different programs going. Our preschool will be at Kokil, everybody else will be at Mark T. Sheen. Uh, we, they have opportunities for um, socialization as well as academics. 57 peer mentors, so that's middle schoolers and high schoolers, will be volunteering in the program. This is a great opportunity for our students. They serve not only as role models, but also as support, social and academic supports. It's enriching for everyone involved, so we're really excited about that. We have two teachers attending O G training this summer, so they'll do a full week this summer. And then throughout the school year, they're actually gonna begin their work to become classroom educator level. Um, on that note, we're really excited that one of our teachers is actually going to start her fellowship training, and that's one of the highest levels um, of O G training. And this really is gonna benefit the district because then she will be able to actually train our teachers in O G to become certified O G teachers. Um, so this is, we're really excited about this. Um, it is extremely beneficial, so you know, it's been phenomenal. Um, and as Mrs. Latour said, we're doing, we're really trying to have all of our interventionists and special education teachers at least have some type of experience in this. Um, there were several Senate and House bills that um, just passed, um, as well as some amendments that passed uh, not too long ago, that have some significant impact on um, the special education world. Um, not only uh, for students with disabilities, but as well as preschool age students. Um, there's a lot of mental health bills that came out. Um, so we are in the process, my coordinators or I, and I are in the process of really looking at these bills, looking at what the impact of our students is um, as well as the financial impact, because there is a financial impact to what just passed. So that is some, as we um, move closer to the school year, I'll be able to share with you. So we are, we'll also look at what our current practices are and make any changes to procedures and policies that we need to change. In terms of hiring, we have a few openings in our department due to retirements as well as um, resignations. So we've already formed some committees. Uh, interviews were held this week and next week, so we are ahead of schedule for those hirings. So we're pretty excited about that. We do have some really good quality candidates, which um, is not known in our world right now. So this is really good for us. We have a lot of individuals who are interested in working in Wallingford, so that just has a lot to do with you as a board, as well as our um, superintendent. Mrs. Latour and I applied for grant funding this year. Um, we had a great trip to BJ's. Um, it was, we had quite a few dollars to spend. We were able to provide uh, 20 families with quite a bit of food, cleaning supplies and health and beauty supplies. Um, Mrs. Latour kept checking me, making sure we were buying healthy foods. Um, it was fun, we had a good time. But the families that we were able to provide this food to were just, I can't tell you how appreciative they were. Um, the, and this is something I think as we continue, we will um, continue to try to do. Uh, in addition to that, um, our counselors and social workers over the last two months went uh, shopping at ShopRite for quite a few families as well. And we have two families this summer that are on our radar to continue to do that for. Um, our community is needy, you know, we, we do have a lot of families and and our mental health providers are are really working hard to try to give our families as much as they can. So this is something that Mrs. Latour and I are really trying to do. Um, in the next couple of weeks, our preschool coordinator is uh, gathering a group of teachers to do some preschool curriculum development, so that will be coming toward to you sometime in the fall. And um, I, lastly, we have a group of principals and teachers from our P K two schools who are attending a week long leadership institute um, run by UConn. So this is an opportunity for us to really look at early childhood uh, and how we can best provide service to our our students. So that is our world, we're a little busy right now, it's gonna be a really busy summer.
Quick question.
Mr. Vado.
Um, you said your extended program over the summer, it's like four weeks or something?
We have a group of students who attend five weeks and a group of students who attend four weeks.
Now, do you choose the students or is it voluntary?
Uh, do we choose the the peer mentors? Or the students who attend? The students who attend, that's all based on their P P T decisions. So that's their teams, it's based on regression of skills over the school year, so that's all by law, yes.
Um, and the other one was the um, I I read about some of these bills that have come up. Some of them are mandated, correct?
They're all mandate, Mr. Vado, yes.
But they're not giving us any money to mandate them?
None of them are funded mandates, Mr. Vado, they're all unfunded. And as Mrs. Belizzi knows, there is some significant financial impact. Um, and I'm just being honest with you now. It's pretty significant for us.
Again?
Again, yes. And I fought hard, I, you know, I'm a member of our concise, our, and we just didn't, weren't able to plead our case as loud as some other individuals were, so.
Thank you.
I did forget, we sent out a letter to our families about the Wallingford Transition Academy move to Apex. Uh, we got some really positive feedback and we're really excited for that move as well.
Thank you all very much. And I know the past month has been quite busy with all of the activities, the end of year activities, graduation, and
and it just seems like we were just here like a week ago, but I know it's been a month. So thank you very much for all that you've done in making sure that all the students had a wonderful end to the school year. Moving on on our agenda are our announcements. At this time of the year, we moved to our reduced summer schedule where we only meet for our monthly meetings. We don't have a curriculum and operations meeting for the months of July and August. Having said that, there's no reason why we can't have Special Board of Education meetings to make up for it. So on Monday, June 26th, we will have a Special Board of Education meeting at the Board of Education Conference Room at 5:00 p.m. The next date of our regular monthly meeting will be Monday, July 24th, here at the Robert F. Parisi Town Council Chambers at 6:30 p.m. And with no other official business. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ross, you wanted to speak. I am so sorry.
That's all right. Just a couple of things. I had the opportunity to attend Project Graduation this year, and I want to personally thank every member that was there, all the volunteers. It was an amazing success. It was out of town, but it was an amazing success. The students all loved it, and I want to congratulate the people that worked so hard on bringing that about. Another thing, Mrs. Belizzi, how are we on summer lunches?
So summer lunches for our programs or summer lunches for all of our students?
For all of our students. Are we doing that this year?
We do not have funding for summer lunches, so that is not something that we have access to. That's why we did all the food shopping before the summer started to try to give families some food before we left for the summer.
Okay, and along that line, I would like to recognize a member of the board, Rajan Dohring, and his group that provides so much food every week, week after week, for the people that need food. He's done an amazing job over the past couple of years. He's rescued more families than I can count, and I'd like to thank him for that.
I appreciate the kind words, Mr. Ross.
Very well said, Mr. Ross. And I do also want to recognize there were many more students who attended Project Graduation this year than in previous years. So it does seem like it was a wonderful success, and the facility was very, very nice for them. So thank you for mentioning that. And with no other comments or official business before the board this evening, I will call this meeting adjourned. Have a good evening, and we'll see everybody next month here.